Okay, I'd like to call a order. The Margrove Public Library Board of Trustees Special Meeting, October 30th at 7:01 PM. Can you call the roll?
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Novick.
Here.
Trustee Hawthorne. Trustee Goldstein.
Here.
Trustee Calaback.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
And Trustee Albers.
Here.
All right, this evening we're meeting to discuss the 2013 preliminary budget. So I guess with that I turn over to your director.
Okay, you have in front of you two separate documents. The 2013 draft budget, this is a summary statement sheet that is basically what we would send to the village in this general format, which is the way that the village needs to see it when they put it into their big levy request. The document that's on the tabloid size paper has a breakdown of the budget items line by line. As you can see, I've got several different columns. The 2011 final, that was the audited amount for that year. The 2012 budget, what we started with. What I anticipate or projected we will end up with as up spending each of those lines, keeping in mind that that can sometimes be hard to project with a lot of accuracy, but I've given it my best shot. I think we're pretty close. And then I also, and then the last two columns are the 2013 proposed budget. And I'm actually proposing, all of the numbers are the same except for the salary numbers. Keeping in mind that the board wants to only allow merit raises, I'm suggesting either a 2% pool of raises, of a salary increase for that line or a 3% pool. And then I've calculated out the appropriate IMRF and FICA and special taxes that are associated with each of those percentages. So I don't know how the board wants to approach this, if you'd like to go line by line, or if there are particular areas of concern, or if you have questions. If you look at the final page, and you can see it on the summary as well. I'm actually anticipating that our revenues will exceed our expenditures using both the 2% and the 3% salary increase pools. And in fact, both of those are, those expenditures are less than what were budgeted for the 2012 expenditures as well. And if you take a look at the top line, the property tax receipts, we're actually asking for less money than we did in 2012 as well. So I think with, we've done some cutting in some areas, some combining of other areas that made more sense, I thought. We've broken out a couple of different areas, and I think we've achieved some savings by, for example, we're going with a different printer for the newsletter, that kind of thing. We went with a different company for payroll. The elimination of the Sunday pay scale has helped a lot as well. So I think that we're able to accommodate the salary increases while still staying, you know, really within our budget, obviously, and like I said, less than what was budgeted for this year.
Hopefully it's a normal question. Under the first item, property tax receipts, why would it be less if you vote with a 3% salary increase?
It's more. It's beside the common, I'm sorry.
306, yeah.
So this is 304. I'm sorry, it doesn't make any sense, but we're difficult to read.
I'm also blind, so I never told you, did I? Okay, let me try that one again. It's been a long day.
What was handed out just prior to the start of the meeting was a 2012 budget. The top line there on receipts differs from the top line on your proposal.
I see that now.
Just after the question, oversight, I pose?
Yeah.
Your expense number is equal to the total revenue number at the bottom.
I'm sorry, the expense number.
Somehow, this number here?
The property tax receipts. And the 2012 budget sheet, you have that one, the very top line to the right, 2012.
This is from the budget worksheet. I will have to, yeah.
Well, I'm looking on the 2012 sheet that we just handed out just at the start. So that number differs from the 2012 number that is on our proposal.
Yep, major effect. Okay, I will take a look at that. Because actually, it increases $95,000. Okay, yeah, I will definitely take a look at these.
97, 97.
Because that number was taken from the spreadsheet, so I will, I will look into that. I can, I can.
We'll have to probably call another meeting and have rework.
Or I can email the trustees with the information. Yeah, if the trustees are comfortable with that, I can look into that as soon as the meeting is over. It's a pretty big number.
Make a suggestion. Acknowledging that this number differs from previous, maybe we can kind of shoot through the, can we go line item?
Sure.
Quickly to make sure that.
Yeah.
The other line items all check out. I checked, I checked everything else. But I circled where the.
Yeah, and I was, because I got this directly from the previous year's presentation worksheet.
And I got that off.
No, I, yeah, yeah, no, I know, so somewhere there's, there's a discrepancy, so I will have to look into that. So I think it's not the. Okay, so did you want to go through the rest of the other revenues then for 2013? Or is that pretty straightforward to most people?
My only concern is that if our beginning number is off by $97,000, and it's counted in as being spent next year, that it would in fact increase the tax, you know.
I'm sorry, if this is off, this is the, say that again, you were concerned.
If we're looking as at 3064 number as budget, and then the 3043, it appears that the budget is going down. But if we use the number that I just got here, right, it appears that the number is going up by $97,000. And so it's kind of hard to, if that $97,000 is spent.
Well, that by the bottom, the project, excuse me, our projected budget, we won't talk. But I will look into that. I do not, I do not know where the, where that discrepancy came in. So until I do that.
It's hard to know.
Right, but, I mean, it's up to the, I could, we could adjourn if you want me to go check on it now.
We don't, or, yeah, we don't, I mean, as far as I know, we don't want to raise the taxes.
Right.
The tax levy for the people who aren't part of the library. I thought that was basically the goal, that we don't want to increase the taxes, the tax levy.
I am not sure where this discrepancy came from.
Yeah, neither, kind of threw me through. I wonder if you're wrong. But I, yeah, my point is I don't want to levy for that 3043171. If really last year's was 2967300, I'd rather vote off that number if that happens to be, you know, if that's the number.
If the board would like to adjourn for a short time, I can go up and I can double check where that, where that number came in or where that discrepancy is.
Sure, sure. If you want to do that. It can be done shortly, but everybody else.
Sure, I'd be okay with it.
Give me about 10 minutes, I'm going to take a look at that.
Sure, we'll take a 10 minute adjournment.
Okay.
It's 7:13.
Oh, we need a motion? Oh, I think that we temporarily adjourn in order to do some more research.
All in agreement? No objections?
Okay, let me take a look at that.
We are in temporary.
Okay, I'd like to call our special meeting back order at 7:29 PM. Can you call the roll, because we're all present? We're all present.
Trustee Peters is correct, this is not the number that the board actually voted on, and that was my mistake. I was working off of two documents, one of which had this number, which indicated no drawdown of the fund balance, and then the summary had the drawdown of the fund balance. So those two documents had a discrepancy that I was not aware of, because I was working primarily off of one spreadsheet that had every, all of the detail on it. So, which did not have the drawdown of the fund balance on it. So that was, that was my mistake for not double checking those against one another. We have a couple of options. If the board feels that it's worthwhile to go through some of the other budget items, if you have questions or concerns or comments about any of those, we can do that. I can make these adjustments tonight, first thing tomorrow, and get all these documents sent out to each of you. We can deliver them, or I can do it via email. If the board wants to keep the same, not ask for any more, then I can.
I know this is a big shock.
No, 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 it's, like I said, it was, I was working on one big document that had all the notes on it and everything else on it, and that did not have the drawdown of the fund balance, and then it had this number.
How did that, how did 3154901 end up on the, on the revenue side?
I'm assuming that's how it ended up. I mean, this is all in Excel. Yeah, this is all in Excel, so I mean, we can double check with a calculator, but I mean, I, you know, they're all, they're all cells in Excel.
That formula probably applied for those numbers only, and there's a formula that applied for this number.
But how did it end up on the, how did it end up on the revenue side rather than the expense side? Yes, I don't understand.
This, this, this is the revenue.
Yeah, this is expenses, and it shows up on, right, it shows up on the expense side here, but here it shows up on the revenue side as the projected budget.
Oh, it just worked out that way, I guess.
Yes, weird number, it worked out that way. There's a 3,154,001 chance that it would end up the same.
Let me see, actually. Yeah, like I said, those are strange.
Aside from the budgeted number.
So I just wanted to know if the board feels that it's worthwhile to go through the rest of the document, because then what I can do is, depending on what the board feels they want to do with the fund balance, if they want to stay at the 2.9 approximate million dollars, if that's what you want to ask for the levy, I can rework where, where some of the primary expenses came in, I can look at those lines again. Some of that is in salaries, some of it isn't. There's a couple other more minor, minor line items.
It is a pretty big job to ask for a $97,000 adjustment really quickly. What kind of timeframe do you think?
I should be able to get it to the board by tomorrow afternoon.
And then how then?
And then if you want to check under being, or you could, if, you could vote, if we went through the rest of the document this evening, you could vote on the final budget at the board meeting. That would be up to you, however you want to work it. I am available to meet, you know, whenever we have to, again, it's completely my mistake, and I apologize to the board. I guess working off the two different documents and one having the number on it and one having just a no drawdown of the fund balance.
We're here, let's ask questions. 2012 projected, the column in per.
Yes.
I think we're in agreement that the line item on 3100, the receipts is wrong, but everything else is correct.
Okay.
So I would ask the board, take a look at the 2012 projected, starting at 3110, and head down, compare that to the 2013 budget number. Do you have any questions?
Well, what I would suggest, one step before that, would be to take this 2012 number of 2,967,300 and put that in place of 3,359.
No, no.
To give it a place to start from, in order to have it as.
Well, I'm just looking at line item. I want to look at the line item revenue. Aside from property tax.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, take this number, and take this number and adjust it to this number.
That would make the total revenues as they would be listed on the 2012 budget's number.
Yeah.
So then this number here becomes this number here, from can we start working on?
Well, she's going to make that adjustment, but while we're here tonight, if there are any questions on anything else related to the budget, we could ask them now.
Well, and that would probably be helpful for me as too, as I'm going through, if there are other lines that are in concern, or if the, or if there's questions or things they may be too high or too low, then I can want that, what is the idea that I need to make.
So aside from line 3100, let's just run through this. Do you have any questions, concerns, or comments?
I have one comment, is that I would really like to stick to the 2% salary as a, as the general umbrella increase for everybody, because all of the full-time librarians almost got a big raise this year that was off schedule and not part of last year's budget. And so considering.
Say that again, I don't, I don't understand. They all got the same, they all got a 2% increase.
No, they didn't, no, they didn't. That's what they were supposed to get, but that isn't, what ended up happening, what ended up happening is that they were all, all the full-time librarians except one was increased to a minimum base pay of, what was it, 40, 44?
It's 40.
$40,000.
I do have a question related to the salary though.
We didn't vote for it, but it happened. I know.
That does, that does raise the question of how the board, understanding the board wants to award merit increases, which is fine. But do you want the maximum to be 2%, or is there a 2% pool of funds, so that some people maybe get 2.5, someone may get 1.5?
I would say, I would like pool of funds, because that would truly be merit, with the cap of whatever.
Like the 2% pool, whatever that ends up being, once we make adjustments, okay?
But not 15% or 1%.
Right, right.
Should we decide on a cap for the raises? That it's a pool up to a certain percent?
Well, I would say, I would recommend a pool of up to, the, I see you're saying like an individual cap?
It's really up to the director.
That's, that is usually more specific than boards get.
Okay.
But certainly, because like I said, we have not gone through the evaluation process for that, that will happen in December. And so there may be some people in some departments that really are performing, you know, above and beyond, and that sort of thing.
Why don't we get a pool that, if that's okay with everybody, and that'll give you more latitude to adjust within the, I do think there are certain positions though, that have hit the cap of what they should be and should not be.
Next year, as we start talking about pay ranges and salary ranges and.
But I think when it comes to merit, I think there, it should be kept in mind, that certain should be capped.
Are they all evaluated at the same time, essentially?
They will be this year, and then every year moving forward.
They have a better, so that you have a better handle.
Yes, yeah, all the evaluations will take place in December from now on, so that we can then start awarding any increases that may be warranted, for whatever reason, at the start of the fiscal year, which is the regular calendar year. Okay, so we'll do a pool of 2%, a merit up to a reasonable amount, as you said, I don't, I don't think that anyone's going to be so off the scale, and with the understanding that some of the, they're taking into a fact, into account possible salary caps. I did want to point out one thing also, if you look at the grants line, the projected is an exact number, because we just got our per capita grant today.
Oh, good. And it wasn't the 23863?
Yeah, that was the.
Barb, that answers your question, because it's based on the new census. And so that should be, they just multiply it a little bit, but it's based on the new census.
Yeah, when you fill out the per capita grant application, that's really interesting, at no point do you ever see on there how much you may get.
Right.
It's just formulas, and then you send it into the state.
So it'll stay the same for the next nine years?
No, they, they might change the multiplier a little bit, they can tweak it.
Which is why we usually end up putting around 22,000, because it's usually around that.
And the thing that I talked to from the state. Right, so that it's a multiplier of the population that they choose every year.
Yeah.
A little bit less than a dollar.
Sort of like everything else they do, they tweak.
They tweak, yes.
So, and as you can see for the budget, again, taking out the top line, I tried to keep everything pretty much the same. For the revenues, there's a couple places that I think will go a little bit higher. Those are all fairly straightforward.
Now, does this decrease professional salaries? I see that there's a big increase between last year and this year with the 2%.
There's, there's a number of reasons that that is, that is the case. First is the, the, in the budget, the assumption was that the professional, the part-time professional staff are going to be moved to the professional staff's budget line, and they were not in practice. I think we had to address that.
Oh, that's right. So actually it's only going up, it is going $40,000.
Right, and then also, my, my position had been unfulfilled for a while, and then we also were, did not have a head of circulation. So that, that's why that seems so much lower.
So basically that $40,000 difference is the difference between what we paid our co-directors before and.
Right, and then with the switch of the part-time professional librarians into their yes. So the new, the projected numbers for the budget reflect all of those corrections, obviously, you know, the director being on board, a head of circulation being here, professional staff, whether they're part-time or full-time, all being paid on the professional staff line.
And actually, if you look at it, the professional salaries have an increase of 133,000, and yet support staff is down.
It's because people were switched from one, yet were in the other.
And so you're just kind of, it's almost a wash.
It is, right.
It is a wash.
Almost a wash.
It, it, in terms of dollars, it pretty much is, but in terms of what, what is, what these people actually are, I mean, our professional number range, whether or not they're full or part-time, should be paid on the professional salary's budget line. Some of these other numbers may change depending on if I have to tweak some of the salary numbers to keep us at a cap that the board would like to stay at in terms of property taxes. So I have indicated what the, like, for, in terms of the next paid down retirement, what their rate is, just so that you can get an idea. So that, those, some of those may change depending on.
Now, this IMRF contribution would only be that high if you, if you spent that entire 2% of that possible pool.
Right, exactly. So, and that, there isn't a better way to really figure that, and so that's always going to be on the high side, because there are probably going to be some people that may not get a 2% increase, or they're not going to.
There's some possible savings there.
Right, so there probably will be some savings, but there isn't a better way to really figure that out until we have exact salary numbers, which, you know, we're not going to have in time with, you know.
Looking at this, at the budget from 2012, the brownish column versus the 2013.
Right.
And I was going to say the bottom line, which is on the top line.
Where are you looking?
The property tax receipts, which is what we budgeted in 2012 and what we're budgeting with the 2% salary increase is actually a tad less.
No.
Well, that's because it's a wrong number.
That's not the correct, that was, that was a number that the board considered.
Okay, we are going with the 2,967.
And keeping in mind that that 3.043 number, that, that's not all for salaries, obviously. It's just, that's how I distinguish between those two lines, because that had impact in a number of different, different areas. So, so my goal, as is the board's direction, is to, to, you know, not ask for any increase in the levy we can possibly avoid it.
Well, the reason being that the couple of years before we came on the board, there were huge increases in the levy, double-digit increases, and.
Would the board consider 3 million as a possible?
There was 18% or 19% raise just a few years ago.
I'm just, I'm just.
Over six-year period, it went from the 2 million to 3 million dollars.
The other thing is that this will affect possibly in the reserves, so that, that number may change as well. I know after, with the 2967300 number, that drew down the reserves to in between.
We wanted to.
To 60, just so that you're sure that that will also then be, so the reserves may be a little less. I would not recommend going less than 60%.
Exactly, we're planning on spending some of our reserves for the improvements of the building.
Then my goal will be absolutely to try and keep it at the original number, and we will, we will go from there. Does anyone else have any questions about the salary portions or the personnel?
Do you really think that the, I thought the health insurance was going to go up?
The 252, I believe does, it encompassed when it did go up, it went up in the second part of the year.
Right.
So I don't anticipate it going up that much this year, particularly we're in a bigger plan with the La Crosse Shield down. So I feel fairly comfortable with this number, as comfortable as one can be with this sort of thing. You know, I've double-checked it against, you know, the La Crosse Shield and that sort of thing. So I think we're probably okay with that number.
Is it, life insurance, it's only $200, but is there a reason that it went down? Since we overspent a little bit this year, is there a reason that the budget did $1,800, and we've already spent $200?
I may even know of that. I will take a look at that and double-check that, and then we have to bump that up to 2,000. I'll have to, I'll have to double-check.
The materials and services.
My projected budgets are kind of looking at what we have spent, you know, by averaging that out and, you know, multiplying it how much longer we have. So some of these things aren't necessarily going to be completely spent by that, but it's just a, a good way for me to kind of get a handle on what we may or may not spend. So I'll see if I can get a more exact number.
Just as a point for the board, under materials and services, you, things are grouped together a little bit differently than they were last year, but if you go through the budget, the total budget numbers from last year, they do match the total budget. The numbers are correct as they are reflected for the 2012, even though they're. the numbers are correct as they are reflected for the 2012, even though they're different than how they look straight out because certain things are blended into each other.
You're still going to take a 14,000?
It's still, it's...
Increase.
It's still, yeah, the bottom line is, the, the correct number for materials and services is of 529,985 dollars. It's just, it's just split up differently. If you look at the bottom, if you look at the third page, under materials, services, stuff, it's just split out differently because of the changes in the ebooks and stuff. It's fun.
Yeah. So, it's, um, talking about the materials or the collection development budget, doesn't anyone have any questions about that? As trustee Peters mentioned, we did move some funds around this year at the request of the department heads, they thought moving ebooks to the book budget line made more sense and gave them more leeway. We're starting, we're starting to treat those ebook holdings the same way that we treat our print holdings, we want to be able to fill holes for our patrons and that kind of thing. And that budget line had previously been an audiovisual and so that didn't really make a lot of sense for us as we move forward and this format becomes more and more popular. So we made that, that change and we did that for both youth and adult services.
And does that then reflect the, the 20,000 dollar difference that it appears to be 20,000 dollars more budgeted for the first breakout of materials and services? This 242,000 dollars for 2013 versus 220,000?
Yeah, the, the ebook budget was 10,600, I believe.
And it's got to be much more.
So I think we, um, we kept that pretty well standard, but we did add some additional monies into, it doesn't show here, but I did take some monies out of the AV budget in addition to, so we removed the ebooks from the AV line, so we depleted that by, by 10,600 but then I also added more money into that because we have just recently begun purchasing television series due to high patron demand. So, um, so there is, so it's not an exact match because, because of the way funds have been around.
Some's got to give, some's got to give.
And then there, the other big increase is, if you notice on the microforms and the digitization, I am asking for 5,000 dollars more there. We do have a number of very, very old local newspapers which are in falling apart condition and we'd like to start to try to digitize them and so this is, we would like to propose doing a few years every year.
Would the historical society be interested in partnering with us on the preservation?
I can find out if these, if they would be interested in doing something like that. The advantage of, of this service that we're going to be going with is there, it will all be in color, they will be searchable, you can put them up on our website. Right now, we've had falling apart newspapers that no one can, can use and even, this is much cheaper than microfilming though and microfilming would not make them available digitally, so this...
Is this a laser speech product, so what's it, it's OCR?
No, I don't think so, it's like, it's almost like a DVD product. So, and then we can actually load it onto our website and then people can search them. So...
Which is important for maintenance of historical.
Well, I think it is, you know, for Morek Grove certainly and, you know, I, and that's a nice way to tie into the 70th anniversary of the library as well. And I, and I think one of the roles of the library should be to try to preserve those kinds of things because that is the kind of thing that you can't get somewhere else.
Exactly.
And, and at the point that these newspapers are, we're at the point where we just, we can't continue to preserve them and they haven't been well preserved and so they really are falling apart, so we'd like to be able to get them in a format that, you know, keeps them longer for people to use. So that's where another, that, another part of that budget.
Uh, I see that nothing's been budgeted.
Well, that was a question that I did have for the board, if they wanted to budget a specific amount towards anniversary celebrations, we have not planned anything as of yet, we are trying to pull together some ideas. So if, if we, if the board feels that that should come out of programming, that's fine, I just wanted to know from you what direction you may or may not want to go with that.
You know, I...
And I know for the 70th, there was a lot of money budgeted, there was 10,000 dollars budgeted for the 70th anniversary and that, that seems quite a lot to me, but if the board did want to put aside, I don't, you know, budget dollars on the board.
What would it be, what kind of program would have to be developed that is already in, for the 70th, actually for the 100th, of the village, Morek Grove put together a very comprehensive history in, in a whole format. So as far as developing, what, what kind of, are you talking about throwing the party?
It's the, I mean, whatever the board wants to do, I mean, if, you tell me. So, some of the things that we have talked about is doing some historical, pulling together the sort of photos and those kinds of things, there's creating some kind of, you know, online museum, if you will, of, of, you know, history of Morek Grove and history of the library, that sort of thing, so we've talked about that. Probably when we're talking about this, it probably would be an event, possibly a musical event, there may be food or cake or something like that.
Make it come out of programming.
Yeah, that is.
Be appropriate programming.
Yeah, so I, and I just put the question mark in there because, as I said, knowing that the amount that was spent on the 70th or budgeted for the 70th and...
I think it'll probably, yeah, just switch it by 97, so.
That's fine, so, yeah, if we want to leave that at zero and, or, you know, not budget it as...
I haven't even, well, I'm inclined to leave it at zero for now.
I am.
But...
But I don't want it, it's just as being overly hazardous, you know?
I also think there's maybe something for the friends if they reach us.
Absolutely, so, um, I will make a note of that, right now I would leave it at zero and put friends a question mark and see what we can do.
And, and the historical society too.
And, and the historical society as well, yeah.
They have actual members, the historical, they do.
Well, and I had spoken with the women from the historical society about doing some other, um, some other partnering things, so this might be a good opportunity to do that.
We helped one, they, Morek Grove did one for the 100, they did a coffee table.
Yeah.
The whole history.
Yeah, there's, there's places that can do that, we can go into something like that. We've talked about doing like an online museum thing and, you know, that sort of thing, like a virtual tour or, yeah, so they've talked about, you know, some different things though and then possibly having, you know, cake and coffee on the actual day of the anniversary, which is February 13th, 20th. I forget the exact date, it's February.
It's, can we delay it till at least...
Until it's more.
When you say, actually, what's the date?
Yeah, I think it is.
And what are we going to make, thinking about having a special board meeting at night? Oh, yeah, because remember the board meeting falls on Valentine's Day?
That's the same day, yeah.
We were going to talk about changing that day of that meeting, but I know that's not a next agenda. That's the next month agenda, right, right, Barb?
Okay, so we will, so for now I will leave that at zero and explore other partnering opportunities for funding if necessary. You'll also notice that the program, the budgets for the vision fair and reference have now all been rolled into programs for adult. And we did that because we're trying to incorporate more of the reference staff and planning and scheduling some programming, revamp the programming a little bit, offer some different types of, of events and that sort of thing.
Will there be enough in there to contribute our usual 500 dollars to the vision fair?
Yes, that has been taken into account. Yeah, but we just rolled them all into one and that allows for greater oversight of this budget line by the head of adult services.
And we usually just spend it in both, so. The reference programming is now in, okay.
It will be all part of the programming, programming adult, adult programming.
And does the, the computer classes and all that, does that come out of the programming adult?
Yes. That had come out of the program reference, but now it will all come out of adult programming.
Okay, makes sense, yeah.
The things that previously came out of program reference were if there was any expenses with the computer programming classes, oftentimes if we had to purchase multiple copies of books for book discussion groups, that kind of thing. So, as you said, I think it just makes more sense to roll it all into one adult services programming budget line, it gives the head of adult services more control over that and it's easier to manage the one.
When I was looking to read again, I was in multiple, multiple book groups and multiple, multiple libraries and I noticed that there was a multiple, the same book was popular throughout the different libraries.
Oftentimes, yeah.
Right, is there a way that we can interface with other libraries and share our...
Yeah, there's, there's a number of online resources that like have been in place for years that, that libraries...
Okay, so we all need to do that, okay, good.
And we request things from them, they request things from us, we send out all the books, we get all the books.
And the bundles and all, okay.
Any other questions about the programming?
The, um, when you go out to the senior center and when you do the book deliveries, does that also come out of 5,300 or what does that come out of?
The mileage for that?
No, the, whatever the programming...
There shouldn't really be any cost associated with that because that's all just material, basically we're just checking things out from our library and bringing them to them.
Oh, and so all of the speeches and stuff are done by our...
I'm sorry?
You know, at the senior center sometimes there's a discussion about what mysteries are good or what...
Yeah, those are all by interns, yeah.
It's all by partners, okay, so it's only mileage?
Right, and I do, I don't know if the, if everyone has gotten it far, I am suggesting that we actually break out mileage completely, which has not been broken out in the past, it's actually at the very last page.
For all meeting purposes?
I'm sorry?
For all meeting...
Well, I think it's easier to track as well because what we were doing was mileage that if you drove to a meeting, for example, they came out of the meeting budget, but if you went to, say, Target to get, you know, quick cleaner...
The maintenance budget.
They came out of, yeah, and that was very difficult to track and, and then we were running into situations where people said, "Well, I went to Target first and then I went to my meeting" and that, so that kind of thing.
Okay.
So, so I'm, I'm requesting, I'm suggesting that we break off the mileage budget completely because I think it makes it much easier to track, so. Anything else about programs?
Do you think the photocopier will stay the same?
We actually have a contract, so this is through ours for a contract.
We have, there's another year left on.
Yes, I will be looking into other copy machines, this, this...
It's hefty.
This is quite expensive from my experience, but on the other hand, it's never as cheap as you think it should be to rent a copier, but, so there's some other options that I will definitely, we will be looking at other copiers and other contractual agreements when that time's up.
Between last year and this year, I'm down to the databases.
Okay.
We were going to do a study to see which ones would cost effectively to work by the number of hits they've gotten.
Right.
Do you know if they have studied this?
Um, we have started to pull those statistics together and after discussion with the head of adult services and the person who's in charge of the databases, we have, and I agree, I think that it's best to keep things as they are because the website is so dramatically changed and our hope is that they will be easier for people to find now and so I want to get a clearer, because I think that was part of the problem with the, some of the usage, is that they have been difficult for people to find.
I think, yeah, part of the problem, I think, is education too on this one.
Right, so, um... So I, I'm suggesting that we maintain the databases as they currently are and then continue to track and monitor and I'm pulling, as I said, we're pulling together all those statistics based on cost per search, cost per session, you know, how many, how many hits each month they get.
Yeah, because it just seems if you...
And then to see if the, the change in the website has made, you know, increased them and then if not, then, you know, then we can say, well, then we can cut here, here and here and here.
Yeah, because it, it seems to be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that from a, a cost per use base, if we're looking at our 5010 through 5050 that we're going to spend a quarter of a million dollars on, the bang for that buck seems to be much more than the bang for the buck that we're getting for the 128,000 that we're using out of the databases.
I do have to say, and I know we have the statistics right in front of me, what I've started, what I've seen so far is that the cost per use is much more reasonable than I anticipated them being.
If you, if you subtract out the use by staff?
Yes, if you subtract the use by staff, so, but this is definitely one of the areas that I'm continuing to monitor. I, databases are great if people know about them and if they're used.
Yeah.
And when there's a real balancing act between how much can be continued to spend on something even though it's great, if people really aren't using it, if they're just going to go to the web, so.
If I see somebody, they get two hits a month.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of any which like that, but certainly those at my eyes would not be maintained, so. And the, the head of adult services and head of youth services are pretty good at taking a look at those things and, and seeing what's being used, what isn't being used. And there are also, some of the, the other kind of databases which makes it, throws another kind of wrench into the whole works is that there are some things that we purchased because we were no longer carrying a print reference collection. And so, you know, money that was not being spent in print any longer, we do feel like there's some things that we do have to have some kind of resource to provide people if they have a question on a specific subject that, you know, we don't have a print resource for anymore.
Are we calling it more then? Because I know that last year we did buy some pretty expensive reference.
Yes, that is being called even more. So, and, and that's simply, people don't use print reference, the librarians don't use it and if the librarians aren't using it, patrons aren't going to use it and the spacing and it's...
And it's on the data when it's printed.
Right, and there's a space concern as well. So that's the other, you know, factor in the database, you know, budget line as well is that some of these things may not get as many hits as we think they should, but sometimes you want to have those things because you don't have another print resource to, to fill that, that need.
Kim, this is a tiny bit off the subject, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That on our new website, could we get like a link to a YouTube or some kind of a demonstration of what these databases are and how easy they are to use to, to really kind of attract people to, to click on that so that they can, you know what I'm trying to say?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think it's something that's so valuable but really invisible to, to a lot of people.
No, I think that's fine and, and the librarians are interested in doing, they had been doing some for a while and we, we took a step back just to kind of get a handle on our marketing, you know, how we were going to market the library in general, but a number of people have their best interest in putting together, you know, instructional videos of all kinds of things.
Right.
And so this, I will make a note and suggest that.
Thank you. The budget for building and grounds maintenance, I see has gone down substantially for next year.
There was, um...
Considering that we're no longer outsourcing, is part of it that we're no longer outsourcing the landscape thing?
I believe that is part of it as well, we've got some expenses that I don't believe we will have quite so extensively and next year. That being said, now would probably be a good time to tell the entire board the story of what happened yesterday.
Yes.
At approximately 10:30, a fire alarm went off in the building and it was not a test and the entire building filled up completely and pretty fast with white smoke and fire department came and took him about 30 to 45 minutes, because I'm standing outside without a coat, to figure out that it was a problem with the furnace. And so we shut down the furnace, we closed the library, I've been in contact with the resident.
Do we have just one furnace?
We have three, I believe. So it was pretty noxious, the fumes, and then the furnace guy finally came about 1:30, 2 o'clock, something like that. I stayed, I sent the staff home, I stayed here with maintenance staff who didn't let it clean up and tried to dissipate the smoke and there was all kinds of leaves and debris because we had all the windows and doors open and of course it was really windy. When the furnace guy got here, he couldn't figure out why this had happened, then towards, he's looking and looking and looking, then at one point he figured out that there were wires that were crossed. Apparently the furnace, if it overheats, it is supposed to automatically shut the gas off, well, the wires had been arranged such that when the furnace overheated, the fan went off and the gas stayed on, so, thank God all that happened was we pulled up the white smoke. So he was out again this morning and he fixed that problem, we turned the furnace back on and we started having the same problem. So that furnace, that unit is now off and he's coming back tomorrow with a camera to try to figure out where the problem is and what the problem is, so.
So it wasn't the cross, so wires really weren't crossed?
They were, they were, they were crossed, but that was not, that was not what was causing the, the smoke, so.
So will they be there in the future since the wires crossed and it was...
I'm not sure, I mean, the furnace, that furnace, those, there's a couple of units that are, this particular unit is between 25 and 30 years old.
The wires were crossed. Why would they have shown them? Why now and that's...
Well, I did, I was talking with a lot of... Well, I was talking with Rod about this, and he thinks what may have happened was we were having problems with this unit with the HVAC apparently in the summer, and they came out, and he thinks they might have done that, but we don't know that.
People might have tweaked...
Right, and so that this was the first time that it had gotten warm enough and, or, you know, cooled off.
Right, to click the furnace.
Right, and sometimes we don't run all three of them depending on the temperature and...
So do the other cloud in the HVAC?
They're coming back out again.
Oh, it's the same people?
It's the same people. So, and probably if we had to replace a furnace or a heat exchanger, which is what they think, the guy thinks it might be, that would be a reserve fund, just because of the cost, so... But I think just in terms of the general maintenance of the building, I think that...
Art said that a heat exchanger is not expensive, but the whole furnace is.
Yeah, I figure the whole furnace, and because of the age of this one, my concern too is that the domino effect, you know? And I also had someone tell me that they can't because there's no easy way to get the furnace in, that they think the...
Those furnaces are much, much smaller now.
Right.
And then you just need this current one, and it'll be fine, so...
It's 25 years old.
It probably should be replaced.
And then, and then my other concern is that the other one is the same age, and at one point will that one start to go? So those are just some things to consider.
It's one for white smoke.
Yeah, yeah, so it was really exciting because in fact the fire department was out twice yesterday because when the furnace guy was here, he turned it back on and it started filling up again, and the alarm went off and they came back out. So the firemen and I were friends yesterday, so...
They're nice, they're nice.
Yes, they were very nice, and they were close, and I was, like I said, I am just thankful that nothing else...
Should have given you their code, though. Did you ever try one of those codes? I have. You're very good.
So like I said, I think for general buildings and grounds maintenance, I think that this should...
Yeah, well, that was my follow-up question is, 54, 62, 8,000, if we, that's 8,000 less than we spent this year?
If we wanted to, we had the exterior, this was a big thing, and we had the exterior of the building painted this year, which would be about 12,000 dollars. It's not something that we're going to have for another couple of years. We get it done about once every five, six years, so, yeah.
And that's coming out of this building?
That comes out of this, yeah, that's, in fact, that's where, that comes out of 70 tons that painting did. So that's, that's what, that's a big part of that discrepancy is that we want that exterior painted.
We gave a huge bump up in the budget because we anticipated, that was the other thing. If you look at the final 2011 to our 2012 budget, the reason we bumped that up so much is that we anticipated having to have some very material changes done here. And my own caution against dropping it down to 54 is because we were anticipating things like furnaces and things like that.
If the board would like me to bump that back up, I'm concerned I'd do so.
That's why, that's why we did it. It was artificially low, the 2011 number, because the building was not being painted.
Right, right, but if you add the 12,000 into the 5400, which was for the exterior paint, I mean, that we're at 66,000.
5,000 for painting doesn't sound enough. That would be enough to do this room.
Yeah. Well, my thought, some of the painting the maintenance staff could do, like the mess in the area.
I agree, but a lot of them need just supplies.
Right, so...
Right, but that's expensive, though. The cost of paint these days is off the hook. That's a joke.
Yeah. I think, I think that...
It wasn't that big.
I think that where you're getting into cost with, particularly, you know, thinking about the exterior of the building, I mean, there's not a lot of painted surfaces, but it's labor, and so that was a, you know...
Was it outsourced?
Yes, yeah, the maintenance, I mean, they had to replace some rotting wood, they were up on ladders, they were... They did the flat hole, which was 800 dollars right there, because it's a wooden flat hole.
Right. Well, we're really happy with paying that.
So, I mean, I think if you add the 12,000 back in there, that's, you're seeing a big, that was a big thing that we paid for. But if you, if the...
I'm just saying, I know you're going to have the twinkie, but just saying that that is why they've never postponed so much because we were trying to not take out of the, we want to have a realistic number for the general maintenance and also have a little bit, if it wasn't spent this year, we'll keep kind of rolling it over because at some point the furnace will blow up, and then it'll be there.
If the board would like me to make that higher, I can certainly do so, I just need your direction.
Wait a minute, see what you can do. I mean, that's why we bumped that up, so that we, you know, some years we've done over, some years we've been around, but that we would never be caught with this big bill saying, "Oh, my goodness, where's the money coming from?" What is the point of it?
They will need replacement.
What? Yes, exactly, exactly, and that's why we bumped the number up.
I will, I will, right now, I depend on 60, and we'll see what we can do. Also, kind of related to that, I did, I did eliminate the line for equipment machinery purchase because most of everything that we're going to need to purchase, we've already done some now, and so any additional purchases, I am suggesting just come out of equipment and machinery.
Does, oh, because we did our maintenance this summer.
We did most of anything that we needed to purchase, we probably have done already, right.
And he has a snowplow, so everyone can...
Yep, yes, we've got just the landlord's snowplow. Any other questions about the buildings and grounds or equipment and machinery?
Well... Does the parking lot lease take into account the number that the last three months it's been bought up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Utilities, just electricity, gas? Water?
Water, interesting, and I'm leaving it at 11.5 just because I don't know how much things are going to go up, so I know it seems high to me to look at what the projected number is for this year, but like I said, and not having a lot of experience here in this location, knowing, you know, what they may be, so...
I would look at the utility bills, what comes out, and what really, really, really bumped it up was the water per yard. If we don't forget, we'll save, it was about, what, 900 dollars or something, the water in the garden?
There was water, no, there's water, all water.
Right, you said, yeah. But I know you're, you're, did the electric come down? I was just looking for it now. Oh, was it changed with the... Did it last? We don't pay for that at your house.
We don't pay for that, we don't pay it.
Oh, we don't pay it. We pay the water.
What else, is this water, and then what else? Gas, it's a gas.
Water, yeah. I live close, it's only a little corridor, too.
It is expensive, I know at my previous library, we had sprinkler heads in some of the grass areas, and one of them broke once, and it's amazing how much usage, I mean, we ended up using something like 500,000 gallons of water. I mean, you don't realize that you get like this, you know, astronomical water bill, so they really do kind of get you for that.
I believe we have a small lawn.
Right.
And nobody cares. We can put a stone out there and get rid of all of them, that's fine.
So I feel like we need to leave that at 11.5 for now just because they don't know how it's going to change, really. The 12 for furniture, I did bump that up to 12,000. I'd like to get some additional signage if I can keep it. Additional tables for the adult services department and some furniture replacement and youth services, which is actually something that I put in the per capita grant for those...
So that's really not costing.
Right. And then the insurance is the business owner, workers...
If we take that, Kim, if we, if we use 8,000 of our per capita grant for, or actually, if we use half of our per capita grant for the signage and furniture, is there enough leftover for self-checkout machine?
I believe so.
Great.
So that's the two main things that I was thinking of.
Right. Well, some of these lines just don't have a bill of honor. Telephone. I found they're riddled.
The telephone, this does include, we are overdue for a system replacement, it's not a whole new phone system, but it, the digital part that runs the phone system needs to be replaced. And it actually has been budgeted for the past couple of years and we've not done it. So we're getting really to the end of life in terms of the support from the company. In fact, we're actually past the end-of-life support for the particular unit that we have. So I would not recommend taking that out if we...
But we'll have it left over for this year.
Well, right, it will be left over, so that would be much easier to roll over. So I know it seems like a lot, particularly if you look at it against the projected, but I think we need to keep it up because we do need to find some new...
It makes sense, you need it.
With your telephones, I have a question. Does anybody ever look at your home phone bill about the universal service fee? Does anybody ever look at the small print in your phone bill? Does it, do you ever read what the universal service fee is for?
Yes, when people, they don't pay your bills.
Well, yeah, it also says, it also says it there for schools and libraries. Take a look at it sometime. Who qualifies, what schools and libraries qualify that are already getting tax dollars from the taxpayer? And it just went up another percentage-wise, probably another 15 percent.
We don't get any money, I mean, I've never, I've never gotten money from any one of the libraries.
Were you telling?
I, well, we just got another raise this month. And I mean, it's petty because it's out of my bill, it's $2.08 a month.
Yeah, but times it by everybody in Warren Grove when you're talking to the library.
Well, how about everybody in Illinois? I mean, Illinois AT&amp;T is doing well. I just, it's interesting because at one point, probably within the last 10 years, that was about 8 or 10 cents a month. And it's just proliferating like...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's something that AT&amp;T does or what that is.
I like the...
So far, they're not giving libraries money AT&amp;T, unfortunately.
I'm sure, I'm sure that we were.
Okay, do the research.
I'm going to do some research on this one.
And the other, the other things are, you know, we have the cell phone for the maintenance department, which we need, the alarm lines, which we need, and then the phone service itself is our monthly charge, so...
80/30 printing, why is that going down so much?
If you look at the 2011 final, that budget, that amount included, we used to have a design firm that did the layout of the Books and Beyond newsletter, that's all done in-house.
Plus the refurb.
Right, and then the 2012 budget reflected the change in not using the design service, and then the 2013 budget, we're actually switching printers to a cheaper printer, so we'll be saving some money, and we'll be able to go back up to 16 pages so we can include the calendar again. But still for less money.
And the postage will stay the same?
I believe the postage will probably stay about the same.
I think so.
So, so, yeah, so that's why that...
Because we're mainly just under the umbrella of without the specific addresses on.
Right, right, and then 800 dollars an issue has been pretty much the same even when we had 16 pages, so I think that we should be, you know, not, you know, taking into account that postage may be going up as well for those particular lines, so we're not going to... So that's, that big jump is primarily when we started doing design in-house.
Did then increase the sale piece of the house?
We, a 60% career now actually works on the newsletter, so she wasn't, this was a new position, so... So there was some increase.
We're definitely beginning to make...
But yes, we are definitely going to...
I've never played it. I wasn't playing, I was just saying that.
Anything else to those particular lines? The next one is continuing education and meetings. I was suggesting in this, that, oh, that was actually memberships, continuing education, ALA and ILA are both in Chicago this year. It is nice to be able to take advantage of those in some libraries if we can. I think it's really, really important for their professional development and support that we see what other institutions are doing, what we can apply here, that sort of thing. So I would like to keep that on a budget line if I can. As you can see, it has actually gone down the past few years, so even with that, I hope not to spend more than the 9,000. The memberships, I know I had suggested this when we talked about the compensation plan. I was going to suggest that the library pay for memberships for the professional staff, particularly given that people aren't receiving time and a half of pay on Sunday, and that...
My only concern is that every other profession that we know, nurses included, pay them a professional fee?
That may be, because I've not, I have not been in another profession, but every other place that I've ever worked has paid for the membership.
It's saying you're lucky.
That could be. I actually consider it, I think it's worth it because as I said, I think it's really important because oftentimes what happens is that, you know, librarians historically have not made a ton of money, and so if something has to give, oftentimes it's a professional membership. And then you're limiting your exposure to, again, what's happening in other libraries, what can we take from other libraries and work, and, you know, use at our own library, that kind of thing. I think it's a huge important part of professional development, and I'd like to...
I'm not against the...
I'm not against it, but I'm against, I think it's your professional responsibility. I mean, the way I always look at it because, but that's because I always think...
Correct.
I say, I mean, does somebody pay your neurology?
Right, you do it.
And...
Jesus, all right.
Yeah, but I, no, to belong to the National Association of Neurologists. Nobody, nobody pays that, except him, and nobody pays money.
This is very, this is important that they belong to us.
Sure it is, sure it is, of course it is. That's what professionals do, though, that's, this is a professional, you know, that's, professionals take their profession seriously.
Are you, are you suggesting that we don't do that, then?
Well, that's my suggestion, but, I mean, I can be overruled, but what I'm saying is, I don't know any other profession where the employer pays the professional.
It varies, usually ILA is a separate, it's a 135 person. ALA varies by salary, so that can vary.
Oh, okay. I'm not against supporting the employees.
I would like to attempt to keep it in, knowing that if I have to eliminate that to reach the board's...
Well, when they achieve that level in their profession, I think that could be a benefit that we offer here.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I just look at it, the application, that when you're professional, it's not your allocation.
Actually, those memberships are relatively cheap.
Right, right. I mean, actually, I basically agree with you because I do pay for my own professional organizations. But on the other hand, we've eliminated, you know, you gotta look at other sides. We know that we eliminated there's some big benefits which I'm sure had an effect, and you don't want to get the staff self-proclaimed if they all walk out. On the other hand, how much do they, how much do they have to contribute to their own healthcare benefits? I don't know.
Well, it's $10, and that would be something that the board does consider as time goes on.
That is a gigantic benefit. Oh, yeah. Gigantic. I understand, because I had the same one. Exactly. No, I had a hundred percent. How many people you have to pay in, you know, at least something into their healthcare and sometimes fair enough? And unless you have a spouse.
We just have to get them all up to Medicare age and then you should.
There you go. But as I said, our benefits are very generous, is what I'm saying. Because they're not chipping into their health insurance, which is unfortunate.
Oh, I, but that does give room to move it, as health insurance gets more and more off the wall, right?
Which it has, yeah. But we have to contribute, and we could have, this year to contribute, you know, and we didn't, we chose not to do it.
So for this year, I would like to try to maintain offering the membership if I can, if that is okay with the board.
Should we vote on it?
We can't vote here.
No, I mean, should we?
Can we vote?
Barb and I want it one way and one.
No, I don't, no, I, I don't. I think they should receive it.
I do too.
In spite of the fact that.
That you and I hold it.
Well, that I have my own.
The three of us had to pay around.
First of all, I wouldn't know, I haven't been in my field for over twenty-five, twenty odd years, so who knows what they've done since I was in it? No, I just think that in today's day and age, when everything is hitting people, everything gets pushed down on these people. I'm one of these people, everything gets pushed down. And it'd be nice to have one benefit that's still there.
I do, it is, it is, it is a perk, absolutely, but I think it's a very important one, because I do think it's very critical for people's professional development. And I would like to encourage that as much as possible, because we only benefit the staff and ultimately then the patrons and this library, the more that people can take advantage of the resources that are available in these organizations and, and again, you know, see what else is out there, how are other people doing things, what else can we do to better our service?
How does the apartment, if we're gonna be sending all these people to the ILA, how would?
Usually, members have a reduced rate for registration. Is that what you're?
No, no, what I'm saying is, what, what benefits are they going to receive if we're sending a big blob of people to ILA? What additional benefit professional?
That one, you know, it's communications, the opportunities to attend other meetings that are not ILA, that happen throughout the year, that kind of thing. ALA, the ability to join other groups, to see a lot of networking opportunities, a lot of other meeting opportunities that are, that are in addition to just the big annual ones, are probably the big, the primary ones. Receive of the, of the magazines, because a lot of people don't necessarily see them or they see them, you know, they're routed, that they might not get to them, that kind of thing. They're just, it's still another way to network and go to different meetings and to see what else is happening in the library.
Ultimately, ultimately, it's up to you, because you are going to figure out how to distribute the budget.
Right.
So, I mean, these are just thoughts and suggestions.
Do they get credit hours for attending those kinds of meetings?
They can, a lot of them do give credit hours. We don't track that at all internally as an organization.
Because we do, and we are obliged to submit like fifty credit hours a year before we get our licenses.
Right, yeah. The library, we could choose to do that as an organization, we'd have to set that up, but we, that's not something that has been required of our librarians in the past.
Yeah, so it would have to be a policy that we would.
It has to be a policy by.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. You know, ALA and ILA certainly encourage continuing education, but they can't require libraries to require it, basically. So if it's something that we feel that we need to do and, and, you know, actually say we'd like the librarians to get X number of hours of continuing ed, a year, then we just need to put something like that in place. Because a lot of the meetings do, do say that this is worth something hours of continuing ed.
What benefits do the ILA give to membership that wouldn't be folded into the ALA?
Well, ILA is the statewide.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Association, it's a different focus, it's a more local focus. I mean, a lot of people will choose to join one or the other.
So it's not redundant? Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is it redundant?
Not really, you know, I mean, there is some, but ILA is very, very, you know, Illinois-focused. ALA is very, it's more just a profession, so.
Which of the two do you feel has more impact?
It's different.
I think it depends, because they are very different. ILA really gives people a lot of opportunity for more local interaction. It gives a lot of librarians an opportunity to present at conferences and do those kinds of things that it's harder to do on the national stage, you know, at that level of ALA. So, so they are different. I think if someone said, okay, you have to choose, you can only join one personally, I would probably choose ALA just because I feel, for me personally, particularly right now, I get the most benefit out of that. But it can differ. I know people that have just joined ILA and not ALA because they felt that they weren't, it wasn't a local enough interaction.
How much does our staff feel is the benefits of, of the membership?
They don't have that membership. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, how much does, oh, currently or not?
I don't know who has, I don't know. Yeah, because currently, we don't offer this.
Okay, this is new.
This is new. So I don't, and I do not know how many staff have chosen to join these organizations on their own. So I know some that have not, but.
Just from my thinking, they're, they're not very expensive. I know with the APTA, it became, for me at one point, prohibitively expensive when I was raising a family.
It is, right, but in our budget is forty-six hundred dollars, is what it's budgeted that would cost forty-six hundred dollars to.
Yeah.
Ultimately, it's up to you.
I would like to try to keep it if I can, if that is okay with the rest of the board, then it sounds competitive.
Or a choice.
No, I will see what I can do, I mean, knowing that I'm gonna have to make some other personal places, but as I said, I do, I do think it's an important, I think it's important for the library.
I think it is. Professional advancement, whatever.
Yeah, it was just, the question was just, we all agree it's important, the question is just who's coming? Does the taxpayer pay for it or do the individual professionals get some?
Well, ultimately, I think it does provide better service to.
It will come back in better service.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm not disagreeing with that at all.
At some point, it's gonna be considered as.
So like I said, I will, I will do what I can with that. The next line is professional services. This is less primarily because of the switch in payroll services.
That's a good point.
The switch in payroll services is saving us a substantial amount of money.
And, Kim, I think we can get rid of the ten thousand dollars here that was just added in last year.
Right, I would actually like to keep that in, because I would like to have someone come and look at our accounting processes to see, and to analyze what we're doing and see how we can do it better and more efficiently, and if we have to change. The class that a number of us are signed up for, that is accounting principles, so it's not, it's not going to be as specific as I want to have someone come in and look at exactly what we're doing, kind of, you know, month start to month end, you know, how we're processing our bills, our revenues, our expenditures, all of those things, our, how are we tracking, are we doing it online, how are we filing, all of those kinds of things.
Do you think they don't, they don't hold that process?
I don't know, I have not.
Of course, they don't go over, they don't go. We do not spend that this year.
If we don't, if we don't spend that, it could roll over, it could be spent on something.
Because that's what it was supposed to be last year, to get that in, so that we could get a new accounting system.
Yeah, so, I mean, is that really part of that, I believe, because I want to have someone take a look at our processes before we start shopping for, for systems, because I want something that's gonna work with whatever changes someone recommends to us. So I would like to keep that in for this year.
On professional services, we have attorney for eight thousand dollars. Does that include the attorney that sits in on our meetings?
Yes, yes, that is, that is fine.
Do we need that?
We probably don't need him to sit in at everything. Yeah, I think if there are specific questions, we can always call him and have him sit in. He is always available for me to, to phone and email, so, and, you know, we have worked with him.
I would like to see that.
I endorse a lot of the decision I had.
Yeah, okay.
So.
That's fine.
Okay, I will, I will have to budget something for that, I'll have to kind of look at what the average is, but I think particularly, the board is now.
That's a reasonable amount to put in the budget.
Yeah, I wouldn't play with that, I think it's a bad time.
You just don't know what could happen.
No, no, it's the attorney figure.
Attorney fee.
I think I would leave it there, and if we have to use less.
What are we, what are we, yeah, for the year?
For that particular line?
Yeah.
You might have loved.
Because we're dropping in by two.
Fifty-two hundred.
Fifty-two hundred?
Over it. I was gonna say, I'd like to.
Oh, you made that up?
I cannot, I don't know, I'd have to look at the.
Hey, can't make up numbers.
I don't have the, I don't have the income statement from September with me.
I don't. It was running, it was running ahead of budget for a while, but there was a lot of consternation going on.
Yeah, I think we're, we've kind of leveled off.
I do too. Is there anything big that you're using?
No, no, I do possibly have one personnel issue that I might be talking.
But our big personnel issue is resolved.
Yes.
So.
The next line, consultant services. I, I put in thirty-five hundred, I have no idea what any of these things actually do cost, though it has come to my attention with the carpet replacement project, that OSHA will not let us do encapsulation on the mezzanine level. I have been informed of that from one of the, one of the bidders, who actually has talked to OSHA, that A, we can't re-carpet the mezzanine, we can't do anything on the mezzanine level. I would like to have someone come out and look at that area.
Yeah, because how did they carpet it before?
Well, they just carpeted over it.
Well, they carpeted it over the carpet.
There, it hasn't been re-carpeted. That's the original carpet up there.
Oh, it's the carpet over the.
No, it's the carpet over the.
That's the special center.
Yeah. So I put that in there, because I would like to have someone come out and take a look at that, just so that we can get an idea of what we're dealing with.
Can we put plywood over there, carpet over plywood?
No. They won't let it, OSHA will not let them do that. This is from the federal, but OSHA will not let them do that.
So what are our options, or don't we know?
Right, right now, our options are to do nothing with that, and.
Which is in the budget, I think.
Right.
It's not what we wanted to.
Right, and that's what I would like to have someone come out and tell us.
Yeah, what our options are.
So that's why I have that amount in there.
It can't be the only building in the world with mezzanine that gets carpeted until it's fifty years old.
Right, but we're then probably won't be the only place that someone says you have to do a payment then. But we need to know that, and then we need to find out what that, what that means. So I'm leaving that in there. Miscellaneous, as you can see, miscellaneous used to include both mileage and our interlibrary loan and reciprocal borrowing fees. And so I've broken those three line items out. As I mentioned earlier, I have created a budget line for mileage, so we can get a better handle on exactly how many miles we're going. A separate line for interlibrary loan and reciprocal borrowing fees, that's mostly if we have to pay other libraries, like our patron gets a book on interlibrary loan and loses it or damages it, or they check a book out from another library and lose it or damage it, and the library's still up.
And when we had to shift things between that room and your.
Right, that would probably come out of postage, but, yeah.
Is there a reason that the staff recognition doesn't come under eighty fifty?
Is that professional?
No, it's staff day. Oh, staff day budget.
Well, staff day is, we consider more of a continuing education sort of thing. Staff recognition would be anything that we, you know, we've got certain rules, that you've been here X number of years, you get a gift card for ten dollars or something like that.
So I mean, on staff day, the, the food comes out of a different budget than the, no, lunch comes out of.
Lunch comes out of that budget.
Aren't those given in staff day?
They are given in staff day, but they, but those have been taken out of miscellaneous. They've always been, the, any, any awards have always been taken out of the miscellaneous budget.
Okay, yeah, and that was my question, should it just be folded into the staff day?
I don't think so, because I'd like to keep that a little more separate. Eventually, because I, I see those as a different sort of thing, I guess.
It's not a good view.
It wasn't, it isn't, I don't think, I mean, because we're not, they're not really high budget item or anything, so.
It was just a little more.
Yeah. And then the special taxes, the FICA, this will change, because the salaries will probably be, they may change depending on what budget adjustments I need to make, so, and the board has indicated they want to go with the two percent pool. And then the annual audit, I'm including in there, and then the tort liability, which we have to pay.
Did they, did they fill us this year?
Yes.
But it wasn't four thousand, was it?
Oh, for the audit?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Isn't it folded into the village? It has been folded into the bill.
Okay, I will double check on that, because there was some note about that, and I don't think they filled us yet this year, and I will find out.
Yeah, don't, don't remind Ryan, don't remind Ryan, because, yeah, because we talked about it last year, and I said, too late, buddy.
You're on tape, he knows.
He knows anyway.
I think we should probably leave it in.
But in all seriousness, I think it might be folded in.
I would, I know, if that's, if that is the case, I will double.
Any other questions or concerns on this?
One last question.
Okay.
Do you have any ideas off the top of your head where, where you might be looking for the ninety-seven?
I have a few, maybe, maybe databases if we have to. I can take another look at the salary line, see if I can get a more specific number for that. The, we can also reduce, we can reduce a number of budget lines by a little bit, you know, if we took some out of collections, if we took some out of, you know, programs, that kind of thing. Those are, those are pretty, particularly programming is a substantial budget, so, you know, we could, we've got some, a little bit of little in there. We might be able to take some out of computers, you know, there's not, a lot of what comes out of the computer budget are support contracts, those are things we're obligated to get. But there is probably some things that we could, you know, we could hold off for another year if we had to. So we'll, you know, we'll take a look at some of those things.
I know it's unfortunate that this happened, because it's a big.
No, it's, you know, and it is what it is, and again, my apologies, I was looking at one spreadsheet and didn't have the, the number on it, so, you know, I know what that's, you know, and I would be completely honest, still, I would hope that the, I mean, the board doesn't want services to suffer. I, I think that that's pretty clear and stuff, and, you know, I would do, you know, my absolute best to, you know, to meet the guidelines that you laid out.
I think, I, speaking for myself, I felt like this year's budget was certainly sufficient, because I totally reasonably, services, library services for the library, and I didn't see why, you know, we didn't have any kind of substantial needs to provide some kind of service. And that's what we promised too, and I would really like to keep my promise.
I will, I would do as the board's instructed. As I said, I will have an updated budget detail sheet for you by tomorrow afternoon, but everyone prefer, I know that you sometimes don't like to have stuff drop shop at your house.
Well, because I'm not home.
Okay. So I will, I will make sure that the board has delivered to their homes by tomorrow afternoon an updated budget detail worksheet, and then you will need to let me know. Do you, do you think you will need another meeting, given that we've gone over the rest of it, before the regular board meeting, where we don't have a lot of other things on the agenda, you could go over it and then actually go down it?
I don't think we need another meeting.
The other thing I can do is check with Ryan if, if possible, with the kind of drop dead date that he needs this from us. I know he has requested it on the ninth. I can see if, you know.
With our meeting?
The eighth.
Okay.
But like I said, there isn't a lot of other things on the agenda at this point, so we could discuss the updated. And my sense would be, since we've gone over pretty much everything.
And we can give individuals feedback within that limited time too.
Yeah.
If you send it to us tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Then you would be, you'd be hearing from all of us.
So the intent is to keep the levy flat?
Flat, okay.
At the present time, my, using the figures that I have, the increases just. At the present time, my, using the figures that I have, the increase is just about six percent.
Well, we're going for it's flat.
Yeah, I can understand that if you can, and we may make it flat anyway, if perhaps we overbudget about certain things and end up with a surplus.
You have to have a little leeway.
Yeah, and there is always, I mean, I understand that the board's desire to keep it flat, just keeping in mind that you can sometimes kind of keep yourself flat into a hole, and that, and that becomes more and more difficult, then you do have to let...
That's totally true.
Right, and that, and that would be my concern, it's just so that the board is aware that keeping it flat for enough, for one or two years, you do continue to, and things are okay, it's when you get to three and four years out that you start to really run some deficits, and then you're really impacting, you know, the services in your operating budget. So it may be wise to think about a one percent increase. I'm just saying that, you know, if you've got to think about that, I'm, I'm going to make it flat, because this has been my instruction, but just keeping in mind, moving forward, the longer you do that, the bigger hole you're creating for yourself, and then it gets harder and harder to levy the amount that you need to meet your service needs.
There should always be a little leeway.
I'm sorry?
There should always be a little leeway.
There is a little, but that, and we also have to live within the budget.
Yeah, but the question is increasing, and the tax revenue.
Well, we just, you know, are, in that regard, just because the population is increasing doesn't mean the tax revenue should be increasing, okay? And the population in this, in this town is older.
Is stagnant.
It's stagnant, and it's...
It's gone down in the last year.
We are less...
It's less.
It's less, like, it's...
Population's less than it was...
We told them, are we under twenty-two-four?
No, I think we're at twenty-two something.
It's twenty-three-two.
Twenty-three-two, twenty-three-seven, something like that.
At one time, we were well over twenty-four.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-three-seven. I, this, this is fine, I, like, just a caution as we move forward, that this kind of, that being a flat for one or two years seems like it's okay, it's when you get into the subsequent years, and then when you have to fund things, and then you are looking at raising the levy by a cer, by a percentage that you don't want. So, like I said, just, just so the board is aware that that, totally aware, just look historically what he...
You cannot go from flat to now, and then at some point later, five, seven, ten, you know, look at that, like what happened a few years ago, yeah?
But that was, that's what I'm saying. That number was artificially put up, and we've been levying, and then saying, we've been reaping the benefits of that artificial increase this whole time. And so we're still reaping the benefits, even if it went up five percent a year, we'd still be reaping the benefits.
You know, I have my internal board, and I would do that, so I will, as I mentioned, I will plan on having an updated budget to everyone by tomorrow afternoon. We will not have another special meeting, we'll just meet at the regular board meeting to discuss that, and then assuming everything else pans out, and it will.
You have to also, you have to also look at what the government gives us as inflation figures. Social Security recipients are getting, what, 1.7 this year?
It's...
Which is very small. However, the government's inflation figures don't include energy and food.
Right.
Which, energy costs fluctuate a lot, but essentially they've gone up, and food prices have gone up for that.
Right, and we've got a lot of senior citizens that are on fixed budgets, and we don't want to increase their taxes.
You want to, if you increase...
Energy has come down this year.
No, it went up, and now it's coming down.
Electric bill has come down, considering.
Well, if you count petroleum as, as fuel.
There's, it's been all over the, all over the...
We've done with the budget, right?
Well, something, something that the board may want to consider is that, you know, maybe doing a one percent levy for next year, just something, something to think about, like, but I just don't, I don't want to see a situation where we're really having to cut.
Yeah, you'll cut services.
There's, there's, there's some wiggle room, there's not a lot in the budget, so...
Things always come up.
And things always come up.
Well, even if you take the social security thing, the 1.7, you know, it's acceptable in my life.
Right, we will, and we will aim towards keeping it flat, that is our goal, and if, if, you know, for some reason I say it's impossible, I don't anticipate that happening, you know, we will get it as, as close as we possible, yeah.
Another group, well...